Okay, we're ready to start. So I'll start off with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge, appreciate that the land in which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we've occupied this territory since time immemorable. Call to order, I'm just going to ask if I can Jake Beck and the crew from the Prince Edward Island Senior Islanders come in into the chamber. Chris, do you want to bring them in? So this is just some of the members of the Prince Edward Island Senior Islanders baseball team that were victorious in the national championship out in Regina. And if I can just read just one snippet of a letter to the editor from Drew Long from Regina. She said, "More impressive than their on-field tactics were their human traits that defined this team. They exemplified teamwork, discipline, and workmanship led by a coaching staff that was calm and collected. The young men were gracious and generous guests in our city and truly, truly upstanding representatives of the island and the maritime spirit." And she did note that an airline strike meant the team was split up, some driving to Boston, others to Moncton and Ottawa, connecting flights through New York, Cincinnati, and Minneapolis, and a bus ride from Saskatoon, a minor miracle that all arrived in one piece. So we just wanted to congratulate you, and we will be following up with a resolution later in the council meeting, and I think they deserve a... Counsel Ramsey, did you want to say a few words?
I think you hit the nail on the head, Your Worship. I just want to say, boys, you did a fantastic job. We're very proud of you for the Charlotte Goodie Audubon Islanders, and you're two up two and all, or three and all, or two and all, I guess, right now. And so we're hoping you're going to keep carrying on the torch, and let's go get them again. Thank you very much.
(applause)
Congratulations, everybody. It's time. Anybody else want to get a photo here?
You want to get in there? That is just operating.
It's time, don't be shy. Cuddle in.
And we get people down front here, too.
You and I have a shortcut.
All right, guys, here we go. One, two. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We will be... (applause)
Okay. So any declarations of conflict of interest? Do you want to notify council that Counselor Trevor McKinnon is unable to make it, and he will not be present tonight? Approval of the agenda, I think we have Counselor Beck, Counselor Twill.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I do, I would like to make a request that we move in the closed session part, be moved up to before our reports, as I have, it is a HR matter, and I have a previous commitment that I have to leave early for, so I would like to be part of that closed session if I could. So I'm requesting that the closed session, that we go into the closed session right off the hop, and then move up the human resources, because there are some potentially anticipated resolutions that come out of that, if I could move up following. So if that's okay with people?
So that's number seven?
Seven point one.
Seven point one.
Or seven, seven would become, would be moved right up to the top of the agenda.
And what about six point three, you going to deal with that, too?
Six point three would move up following it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Okay, question? All in favor? Okay. Counsel Twill?
It's on conflict of interest.
You are?
No, I want to raise a point.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Every month, we're asked to declare a conflict of interest if you feel that you're in a conflict of interest, and of course, there's always the apprehensional bias, perceptual bias. My question tonight is, and I tried to raise this a few months ago, my question is for a solicitor, what takes precedence? Proposed conflict of interest and apprehensive conflict of interest, or putting your holdings in a blind trust? If you're in a blind trust, for example, are you still able to participate even though from a community's perspective, you're in a, you could be in a conflict of interest? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand what takes precedence? Conflicts of interest, or if you're in a blind trust, what, are they both on the same level? Does one take precedence over the other? What's more important from a community's perspective?
Okay, Counsel Twill, we're at the approval of the agenda, but I'm going to take your advice. Could I ask our solicitor to look into that?
No.
No, 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 I'm going to ask her to look into it, and we, can you come back to us with a legal opinion? Okay. Nope, not now, because we're under approval of the agenda, and we have to, you've got a heavy agenda, and we want to get going. Okay, adoption of the previous draft minutes of council. There are three sets, well, actually, yeah. Regular meeting, August 12th, 2025. Special meeting, August 26th, 2025. Public planning meeting, August 28th, 2025. Moved, moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Question? Question called? All those in favor? Okay. Okay, business arising out of the minutes of August 12th, August 26th, and August 28th, 2025. Seeing none? Okay. So I need, we're into motion to move into a closed session. I have to ask everyone in the chamber to depart, because this is a closed meeting for the first part of the meeting, as Counselor Beck indicated, he has a family function, so he'll be going to that. So who's going to move that motion? You're going to move it, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Counselor Twill, you want to discuss the resolution?
Yes. My question is, what about the folks that are here this evening? We have seniors that are here, where are they going to go as we go into closed-door session? And we have members here from QP 830. We have people here that have a very keen interest in one of the agenda items on planning, and of course, we have our representatives here from QP that are very interested in tonight's proceedings. So my question is, where are these folks going to go?
Well, I guess we can all help take the chairs out into the foyer and provide seating. And if the seating already there?
We got to do something, because...
There is seating there?
What?
Yeah.
Is there?
So this is a request made by Counselor Beck...
No, I'm not disagreeing with the request.
Because he has a family event.
My concern is the folks that are here, where are they going to go?
Yeah. Yep. We'll move them out into the foyer, into the hallway, and have our closed session. So if we need to move some chairs, let's move them.
Leader, I am trained and certified in mental health first aid. We do have our EAP program, as Counselor Beck mentioned. Of course, we need to be aware if someone is experiencing mental health issues. So, a lot of the time, they will say they have no one to go to, but we're not aware. So, we are available, but they need to use the resources.
Follow-up to Counselor Twill?
Okay, so, just so I understand it correctly, you're trained, as you just pointed out. So, if an employee, whether it be Parks and Recreation, Water and Sewer, Public Works, has experienced some difficulties and they're seeking help, first point of entry in City Hall when it comes to senior management is the Human Resource Department, contact the manager. Am I correct on that?
Yep. My recommendation again would be they contact their leader directly, and they can be directed to me. If they're not comfortable going to their leader, they can come see me, the HR manager.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Counselor Beck, that's it? Okay. Let's go to 6.1. Planning and Heritage, Deputy Mayor Alani Yankoff. Emily, could you just send in Mr. Gundrum and David Gundrum?
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, everybody. The Design Review Board Committee did not meet this past month, nor did the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Planning and Heritage Committee has met, has not, also not met since last month. But the Planning and Heritage Board met on Tuesday, September 2. Copies of your minutes are in your report and are in your package. And also, at the end of the Planning and Heritage package, you'll also see the permit applications issued up to and including October 1, 2025. And just a few little brief highlights on what's happening. We're still in the process of working on our rework of our zoning and development bylaw. And so, the, that, the consultants are still working on that with the staff. And we look forward to bringing that to public engagement and public information sessions. So, we certainly encourage the public to be part of those zoning and development bylaw amendments and changes, and their input is crucial in these types of situations. The project, that project is scheduled to be completed the end of 2025. This is zoning and development bylaw. E-permitting is still on schedule, again, scheduled for completion by the end of 2025. And also, the pre-approved housing initiative, again, is scheduled to be completed by the end of 2025. So, this evening, we have four resolutions for your consideration and one, one reading, one second reading, no, once, yeah, one second reading. And if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Counselor Twill?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Question I have is the same question I had last month. Developer went publicly, went public in our city and scheduled a meeting with the Minister of Housing and Municipal Affairs, the Honorable Stephen Myers. And I asked for an update as to what has transpired as a result of that meeting. Developer wasn't happy with the official plan that the city of Cheryl Town had passed. And it's been two months now, and I'm looking for a status report and update as to, is there going to be any changes by the minister with respect to the 500 lots, the historic part of the city? How does development occur from a high-density perspective? And I'm just wondering, as the chair, have you been notified by the province or as senior management, chief administrative officer, director of planning, do we, do we have any knowledge as to what has, has taken place since, since that, that particular meeting with this, with the developer and the minister?
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Twill, for your question through the mayor, to you. I have, as chair of Planning and Heritage Committee, I've heard, I have heard no updates. I know that you requested that last month for an update. We can request it again for an update. I'm not sure if the staff has any update at this stage or not, or the CAO, nor do I want to put anyone on the spot. But if someone does have anything that's shareable now, feel free to share it. If not, we can circle back to Counselor Twill's question, hopefully, maybe by the special, the middle-of-the-month meeting, fourth Tuesday of the month meeting. But if any staff does have an update, I'll happily take it.
Michael, David?
Thank you, your worship. Through you and our chair, the Counselor Twill, staff have been in discussions with the provincial staff, conducting the review of the official plan. We continue to work with them through that review. We haven't heard anything as far as the, what happened at, you know, that specific meeting that you're referencing, but we can certainly request further information on that and bring that forward.
Okay, Counselor Twill, follow-up question?
So, would the results of that meeting come from the, the, the management in, in that particular department, or would it come actually from the minister? Would it come from the minister, say, to, you know, the mayor and council or the chief administrative officer? I'm just trying to understand the, the lines of communications and how that information is, is brought back to city council. Because, like I said, it's been two months now, and while you're working, a work in progress with respect to the official plan, and that's for, I'm interpreting that for the province to, to adopt the official plan, and yet, we were thrown a curveball last month with respect to that meeting. The meeting took place, and yet, we still don't have any information as to, you know, where that is. And that's why I rise tonight to ask for a status report.
Deputy?
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Twill. At this stage, city council approved the draft official plan, moved on for ministerial review, and that's as far as, that's, that's the only information that I have at this point. But if Director Mike or Manager David wanted to add anything else to this topic, please feel free.
Director Mike Russ?
Thank you, your worship, and again, through you and the deputy to Counselor Twill. As far as the communication chain, if there was an update coming from the minister, that would typically come, I would say, through the mayor's office and council.
Nothing.
As staff, we deal with the provincial staff themselves, the bureaucrats. So, that's the information that I have access to at this point. But like I said, we can certainly ask that question and bring forward further information at a future date.
Yeah. No, I, I haven't heard anything. All I heard is that an MLA, Emily Trivers is talking about, you know, working with the landlords, and the minister said, "No, we're not doing that." So, I, I have no idea. No one got back to us. CAO, did he get back to you?
Thank you, your worship. Certainly, preceding that meeting, there was some contact with the, the minister's office advising us of the meeting. I certainly expressed our interest in getting updated on the process, and following the meeting did reach out, but have not been able to connect with the minister as of yet. But I'm assuming if there was any meaningful updates to come from that meeting, that the minister would share them.
But, deputy, we're moving forward on the, getting this official plan passed because it's, it's essential.
I mean, right now, the, the steps that, we're, we're following the proper steps. It's, it's within the minister's office and under ministerial review. So, until we hear whether or not their review is, is acceptable or to, or, or whether, if the minister comes back and asks the city to do changes, then that's the minister's role. He can do that. But at this stage, we don't have any of those, we don't have any of that information. Yep.
You ready to go to the first resolution? First resolution, Mr. CAO Brad?
Your worship, Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Alani Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Let it be resolved that the following major variance for subject property identified as 300 Fitzroy Street, PID number 352617, be approved. First, to permit the establishment of a detached accessory dwelling unit, brackets ADU garden suite, on the subject property having a lot area being less than 0.5 acres, 0.2 hectares in size. And two, allow the establish, allow for the establish of three accessory buildings on a lot being less than 0.5 acres, 0.2 hectares in size. And third, increase the total combined allowable area of all accessory buildings to be 80.81 square meters.
That's it? Questions called? Questions called. All those in favor? Contrary? A1. Okay.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mayor Alani Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Let it be resolved that the following rezoning request for the property identified as 66 McGill Avenue, PID number 355073, be permitted to proceed to public consultation. To rezone the subject property from the single detached residential R-1S zone to the medium-density residential townhouse R-3T zone in order to permit up to three units within a coverted dwelling.
Coverted dwelling, your worship. Thank you, sir. Questions called? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary? A1. Okay. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Three, moved by Deputy Mayor Alani Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Let it be resolved that the following rezoning requests for the unaddressed subject property on Burtwood Street identified as PID number 363515, be permitted to proceed to public consultation. To rezone the subject property from the low-density residential R-2S zone to the institutional I-zone to facilitate a lot consolidation with a budding property identified as 49 Longworth Avenue, PID number 363341. And to allow for future establishment of an accessory building, brackets school portable to an existing school.
Counselor Twill?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the building's already there. This building's worked on all summer long. It's established, it's functional, and now, we're going to be going through the public consultation process when the building's already built, it's functional, operational, and it's there. This is a moot point. This is a moot point unless, you know, is council going to flex its muscles and, and say, "Well," to the school branch, "you should have, you should have proceeded, filled out an application previously before the work was completed." So, I guess my question is, what, what are we doing here? Is this just a game of smoke and mirrors? Smoke and mirrors? And what are we saying to the residents on Burtwood Street? And what are we saying to the residents on Burchwood Street? In, in Burchwood Street, Alexander Drive? What are we saying to the people in Longworth Avenue? Laphthorn Avenue, Gerald Street, John Street? You know what? Just go ahead and build, build whatever you want, and then come back later and just fill out an application, and, you know, we'll play act two, scene three. What actually we doing here?
Deputy?
Thank you, Councilor Twill, and if you had listened to, and maybe you did listen to our Planning Board meeting, we did have some similar conversation about this. Here's a really bizarre situation that we're in. So the school board or the Provincial government put up a mobile midsummer in anticipation for more, more students than they had anticipated. How long they had that plan, I don't know. But when, when the, when they then realized that they needed a permit for that, that's when the planning staff discovered that they actually were putting this little mobile unit on a parking lot that actually wasn't even a parking lot, it was still zoned residential. So, so that's when staff said, "Well, wait a second, we can't even go to this step until we actually rezone your existing parking lot that's been there for several years where they park." And so this is what we're going to public consultation for, is because it's currently residential zoning, but it's used for, and I, and I think we want to change it to institutional. So we have to do that before we can even deal with the permit, the permit of the building. So your point is not lost, but we're not even, at this stage, we're not even talking about the little building that's there without a permit. We're talking about a parking lot that isn't really supposed to be a parking lot because it's, it's zoned residential. So that's what, that's what we've been asked to do tonight, is take this to a public consultation so that the public can hear that information and understand that it, it does appear that we're playing a little bit of boxies on this, and we don't know historically how this happened or how long this has been a parking lot. So that's where we are right now. So, you know, this is the process, right or wrong, I encourage us to, as we weave our way through the changes to the zoning and development bylaw, that will be our opportunity to make some positive changes perhaps, so that we're not in a bizarre situation like this again going forward. But right now, these are the cards we're dealt.
Councilor Twill, follow-up?
I guess my, my question is, what does this look like to the community? You know, we can talk about what, what the parking lot's zoned as, we can talk about the building that's built. You know, I'm glad to see the, the school population full, I think that's fantastic. That's not the issue. The issue is, we have policies, procedures, and processes. I've heard that a number of times in this chamber, and yet at the same time, we not only put the cart before the horse, but we're going to go through the public consultation process. Are we, like, what, what are we, what message are we sending to the community? Build, we'll forgive, and then go ahead, and we'll allow it? I mean, this is, this is, I don't know. I, I don't know, and I mean, the school branch, who's responsible? Is it Administration at Burchwood Junior High School, or is it Director of the School Branch? Is it Minister of Education? I'm not sure. But the optics, you know, we talked about optics in our closed-door session, optics, same here. It's terrible.
Deputy?
Thank you, Councilor Twill. I don't disagree. I mean, optics certainly play a big part into this unique, not necessarily only unique, but a situation that doesn't happen often. And not to put Manager Gundrum on the spot, but is there anything else that you would want to share? Did I clarify that as best I could from, from where, where we are right now? And, and is there anything more that we can say to assure the residents or the Council for the area in terms of this file? Thank you.
Mr. Gundrum.
Through the Chair, Deputy, thanks for the opportunity to speak on this, and to Councilor Twill, the rest of Council, I would just provide an opinion here that the resolution before you tonight for this matter is really a housekeeping exercise. At some point in the past, the PSP acquired a lot that's beside Burchwood Intermediate. It was a separate lot, zoned residentially, so we're really trying to clean up a historic issue here where the school board, the school owned two properties side by side. The rezoning, the lot consolidation has been triggered, was triggered by a desire for the PSP to put a temporary school portable on the site to accommodate excess student population for, for this year and possibly years ahead. And in, in that engagement during midsummer, I'd say the PSP engaged with us some point in late June, early July. It was discovered that to accommodate this, we would not only have to consolidate the lots, but also reconcile the fact that there was different zoning on the portion of property, not conducive, not permissive, allowable to allowing a school portable and accessory use to the main use on the main site. So truly, this is a housekeeping exercise to really close the loop on something that was not addressed in years gone by because there was no trigger to address it. The school didn't trigger the need to address it through any action on their part up until now, so.
Councilor McLeir?
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor Brown. I'd just like to comment, I know Councilor Twill was concerned about the message into the public. I think the Deputy Mayor, Chair of Planning has done, gave, given a, an excellent explanation, as has the Manager Dave Gundrum, you know, it was a mistake, you know, it's being corrected. I think the message into the public is, is good, in my opinion. And, you know, the, the, planning, you know, and these sorts of things, it, it can be complex files and things, you know, with history, these sort of things happen, and we're correcting something and, you know, move on.
Okay. Councilor Twill, this your third time, and under the new procedural bylaw, three times. Go ahead.
Through the Chair, to the Manager. So, so correct me if I'm wrong, so the Department did know when the building was being built and being put onto the lot. You were aware of that. Do they have a permit?
Just one sec, good. Yeah, you have to direct it to the Chair, but it's all right, okay?
Through the Chair to Councilor Twill, the school board, or I could simply say Department of Education, I'll call it the PSP for a synonym there, engaged with the planning Department, made known their plans to put a portable on the site. Again, we had communication with them in midsummer. And we, we do have a permit, we do have a permit that's been submitted for this, but that permit essentially has been put on hold pending resolution of the zoning matter. So again, I'll emphasize this is really a housekeeping matter. We were made aware of the intention of the school to do this a few months ago, and we made known to them the zoning issue, the, the lot line issue with having to do the consolidation, the merger of lots to wipe away that internal lot line that would create setbacks that might cause an issue for locating the portable. And we also detailed for the school board officials the general amount of time it takes for a ZBA to get processed, which is on the order of three to four months to get through all the steps and process, and ultimately be sent to the Province for ministerial approval. So they were made well aware of the, the amount of time it would take. Unfortunately, the Province didn't engage with us even earlier than that so that we could have got this resolved before the school year started. And I understand the school being in the situation they were in, that they just went ahead and put this on the property to accommodate an urgent need. And we're basically through this process trying to reconcile the process piece to essentially, you know, clean up a historic issue that's been laying there dormant and maybe unknown to the school board itself for many years, so.
Well put, David. Question? Questions called? All those in favor? All those against? Nine-zero. Next one.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Four, Your Worship, moved by Deputy Mayor Lanny Yankoff and seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Let it be resolved that the request to reconsider a decision of the city to issue a development permit, Permit Number 214-BLD-25, as it pertains to unaddressed property located on Havlin Street, PID number 1100635, concerning the construction mobilization on the subject property be, to, on the subject property be denied to continue through the reconsideration process.
Councilor Twill?
Thank you. Late this afternoon, all members of Council received an email outlining a number of concerns from a chronological perspective as to a, a number of issues that were outlined in that email. So I don't know if Councils had the time to go through all of these particular items. They're all itemized, well-written, and I think the first course of action for the community was to file a reconsideration here with the City of Sherle Town. And then at the same time, simultaneously in abeyance, filed an appeal with Iрак. So I guess the question is, all the issues that were outlined here, I don't know if you had a chance to get a copy of the email, gentlemen, in the Planning Department. My question is this. After review of every one of these points that were outlined, what is your, what is your estimation of success when this goes to Iрак? Will the City of Sherle Town be successful in denying this reconsideration and staying the course? What's the probability either way? That's my first question.
Okay. That has to go through the Chair. Chair, do you want to answer that?
Well, what the probability is for success going through Iрак? I, I don't have an answer for that, but I can tell you that the staff, in, in their opinion and their recommendation is that they believe that the reconsideration at this, this stage of the game has not met the, the three thresholds that are required to meet a reconsideration. I've also asked if Manager Gundrum or Director Mike would be able to speak to some of those points that had been highlighted today in that email that could, you know, I know a lot of them were highlighted already in Mr. Gundrum's report when it, when it came through to Planning Board. But if there is anything else before we continue, continue to debate this resolution, if there's anything else, David, that you can add to that without putting you on the spot, I'm not even sure if you had a chance to read it, it just came in later in the day, and if that's appropriate to ask you if there were any items in those concerns that, that were had by the residents in their, in their reconsideration application.
Mr. Gundrum?
Through your Chair to, through the Chair to the Deputy Mayor and Chair of Planning Board, there's nothing, I did have a chance to review that email, and there's nothing raised as points in that email that was not otherwise covered under our planning report to, to Planning Board, which is contained in your package and contains our recommendation to the Board to, to then be recommended to Council. So I don't have anything further to add. I think everything was covered off in our report, yep.
Councilor Twill?
In your report, there have been discussions with the Province as, as you work through the process in terms of permits being issued. I wonder, Chair, just from where we're at this moment in, in the work in progress, can you please tell me, and maybe tell the audience, what issues, what permits have been issued thus far? And what is the recourse besides the reconsideration that was filed by, by the residents in the West End of the city? And in terms of public consultation, have we exhausted all those opportunities for the residents to have an opportunity to consult with the Planning Department and senior management? You know, they're taking the time. There's, there's a lot of questions. Many questions. They've, they've got a petition. I, I don't know. I mean, they've, they've, they've been very determined, very, very concerned about this particular property. It's on the waterfront. Everything from, you know, what that green space has to offer, the boardwalk, a lot of these, a lot of these issues, they, they've been very, very professional in their approach. And I just want to make sure that the residents in this community get a fair hearing. That's my motivation. I want them to get a fair hearing so that they feel it was done truly in an open and transparent manner. Truly in an open and transparent manner, and that there's no regrets. Because, you know, this, this battle's been going on for a while. I think it's been five years now. And, you know, our job is to make sure all perspectives are brought to the table. All perspectives. Thank you.
Again, Councilor Twill, it has to go through the Chair because the Chair is responsible for this, board. And this, this goes back to 2019, six years ago. And 2018 is when they changed the zoning to waterfront that didn't permit, and we went through that, Louise Aldrin and her group, doesn't permit public consultation. So do you want to just add what he's asking?
So to, thank you, Councilor Twill. So your first question was, what's the stage of this, of this project and what permits have been applied for or issued? I think that was your first question. So at this stage, one, one permit has been applied for and, and, and granted from the Department of Planning and Heritage, and that is for a mobilization permit. And at this stage, that's the only permit that has been applied for, and it's the only permit that has been granted. So that's where we're at with the project. So when it comes to reconsideration, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an odd little thing we have in our zoning and development bylaw that gives anybody at any time an opportunity to recons, ask for a reconsideration of a council decision or a staff decision. So in this situation, these folks are asking for a reconsideration of a staff decision on a permit that they granted for a project that may or may not happen. I, we can only assume it's going to happen because they've asked for a mobile mobilization permit, so clearly they plan to move forward on this. And if they move forward on this project and they do it and, and adhere to the existing bylaw, then that's what we call the "as-of-right" build. And that means that there is no public consultation. It's no different than if you apply for a building permit to build a house in a subdivision. If you don't need setbacks, and you don't need a rezoning, and you don't need a variance, and you don't need anything like that, then that, that, that happens in the staffings at the staff level. Now, these folks have the opportunity to, to submit applications for any reconsiderations they want going forward. But right now, tonight, what's on the floor is a reconsideration for the mobilization permit that was granted by the, by the Planning and Heritage staff. The staff have recommended that it does, that they do not feel it needs to be reconsidered. The Planning, the Planning Board agreed with the planning staff. So it's here this evening with two recommendations, one from staff and one from Board, that it does not meet the threshold that is required for a reconsideration. So that's about the, really the only thing that we have that we can even talk about at this stage, because that's all we know right now, is one, one permit, and, and we're moving it along, I guess, one permit at a time, because that's all the information that we have right now.
Thank you, Deputy. Councilor Twill, third time.
So I, I did ask about, as we work through the process, right? I mean, you can tell by the people that are here tonight, they're very, very interested in what's happening in their community. So what, or what, and might I understand from what you just stated, that as we work through the process, that there will be no public consultation permitted because of, of, of the zoning? There's no, no alternative? There's no options, opportunities for, for, for the residents in this community that, you know, are very concerned about the boardwalk, very concerned about the green space, very concerned about the view to the harbor? And there's many other issues that are associated with, you know, the campaign that they've launched. And, and, you know, they've been very consistent. I know the developer wants to move forward as well, so, but just want to make sure that folks that are here tonight get a fair hearing.
Deputy?
Thank you, Councilor Twill, and... Thank you, Counsel Twill. Because of our zoning and development bylaw, if the rules are followed that are provided in our zoning and development bylaw, then therefore both staff and council are bound by them. So where we are on this is, one permit has been applied for, staff felt that it met the criteria, it was not asking for anything more than mobilization at this stage. However, we don't know what the future brings in terms of, we don't know the next permit that the developer may ask for. Maybe he or she will require a variance, maybe they will require additional setbacks, maybe they will require that. But at this stage, the first permit was an "as-of-right" permit. So if the next permit requires, that don't adhere to the existing bylaw, then that, basically, then they will be asking for us to bend the rules for them. That's when the public comes into play. So if we're not bending the rules and changing the rules, then there is no public consultation. But where the public can get more involved is as we go forward on the changes to our zoning and development bylaw, I encourage everyone to get involved, be active, follow the surveys, come to the meetings, have your voices heard. That's where change can happen, if that's what change, if there is change that you want. So that's what I've got right now, Counsel Twill. I hope that answers your question for now.
Deputy, going back to that meeting in 2019, I know Doug MacArthur was there, and it was very clear, there was a resolution July 18th, 2018, that changed the zoning. And prior to that zoning, prior to 2018, any new development on the waterfront required public consultation. So that's how it went. Okay? Questions called? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay, seven one. You have something else here? Ready? Yes.
Your worship, City of Charlottetown Amendment, zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD.2.101 to adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-101, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from the low-density residential single R-2S zone to the medium-density residential R-3 zone for the four lots identified as lots 16, 17, 28, and 29 on Violet Circle and Evelyn Street, PID number 778308. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD.2-101 as pertains to the four lots identified as lots 16, 17, 28, 29 on Violet Circle and Evelyn Street, PID 778308, as attached, was read and approved a first time on August 12th, 2025. Let it be resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mayor Alani Yankoff and seconded by Counsel Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass?
Let it be resolved that the said bylaw be adopted, moved by Deputy Mayor Alani Yankoff and seconded by Counsel Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? That's okay. No. And... Michael, thank you very much, and Shane also, thank you. Okay, next report. Economic Tourism and Cultural Development, Counsel Terry Bernard, and I see that Wayne's here. Okay, hold on. Just one second. I'll ask you that. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Time for some good news now, eh? Good news committee. The Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee, your worship, met on August 21st, and the Arts Advisory Board met on August 25th. The minutes are in your packets. There's no resolutions tonight, your worship, but I do have some comments. First of all, your worship, we'd like to congratulate and welcome several new businesses opening in our downtown core. And they include the Pink Crow, which is the new restaurant on Queen Street, Lone Oak, KY Home Solutions, the Deli De Ber, and the BU Ber. It's always nice, your worship, seeing new businesses opening up in our city. Charlottetown's experiencing a strong tourism season with early indications pointing to high visitor numbers. Local operators are reporting robust business, potentially driven by a renewed sense of Canadian pride, encouraging more domestic travel alongside a resurgence in American visitors, particularly from the cruise market. And, your worship, I wouldn't doubt the NHL tourism deal is bringing traffic here, too. This fall promised to be an exciting and eventful season with major events like the PEI International Shelffish Festival, Moonlight Bazaar, PEI Fall Flavors Festival, and the Canadian Bean Bay Classic. And in October, your worship, as we keep on going, people will enjoy the Charlottetown Scarecrow Festival, the Farm Day in the City, the Fringe Festival, and one that we're very proud, your worship, to have won the rights to host, is the Canada Soccer U-15 Cup Boys and Girls National Championship. And this will bring an expected up to 1,500 visitors to the city, eating into and over the Thanksgiving holidays. So, your worship, note for everyone here, we invite everyone to take part in the city's Public Art Policy Survey. This is everyone's opportunity to share your thoughts on the role of public art in our community, what kinds of art you'd like to see more of, and where you'd like to see it displayed. So, your worship, members of council, the survey is open until September 19th, and you can find that survey at charlottownhall.ca. So, your worship, if there's any other questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I do want to say, Counsel Bernard, Kirsten Connor, who is a principal at Prattville Elementary School, was the winner of the Art Love Competition in Chediac, three maritime provinces, seven communities. So good on her to take that back to Charlottetown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Matar.
Thank you, your worship. The strategic priorities, communication, and intergovernmental cooperation committee did not meet this month. Therefore, there are no minutes in the package and no resolutions for your consideration. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you for your report. Counsel Matar, I have a copy of the resolution that was passed with respect to Boulder Park. And, you know, we're learning more now about what was included as far as, you know, council's autonomy and independence when it comes to who has the final say with respect to that property. So when I look at the resolution, I think this is very important. City of Charlottetown enters into a purchase-sale agreement with the Fathers Confederation Buildings Trust to purchase the property known as Boulder Park with the following terms and conditions: purchase price of $4.8 million; item two, $1 million payment of the date of execution of the purchase and sale agreement anticipated by March 31st, 2025; and an annual payment of $380,000 per year for the next 10 years commencing in the fiscal year of 2025-26. I go back and read the resolution, and when we talk about terms and conditions, the real terms and conditions were not illustrated in this resolution as to who has the final say in the property, okay? Those terms and conditions should have been crystal clear in this resolution. I question now, I question the validity of the resolution, and I question the sale of the property due to the fact that council did not have an opportunity to view, debate, and discuss what the real terms and conditions were in the resolution. So that's my first question, is from a legal perspective, I don't believe this resolution is valid. I don't believe the sale is valid. I really don't. And to my mind, from a responsible government perspective, that should have been clearly illustrated in the resolution. So I guess from that point of view, I'd like you to take this back to your committee. My question about the validity of it, whether it be legally, administratively, take it back. Like you to, you know, maybe we need an independent report, legal report. But I don't believe this resolution is valid. I really don't, because it wasn't illustrative in the resolutions. Due diligence was not followed. You can't spend $4.8 million of the taxpayer's money, and all the facts are not in the resolution. That's not a criticism of you, but I'm just saying, that's my first point that I'd like to bring up regarding this resolution.
Counsel Matar.
Thank you for that, Counsel Twill. You know, certainly I can't address the question as to whether or not, you know, if that resolution is valid or not, but I think it is worth certainly having the discussion and working with our CAO and our legal team to determine, you know, if in fact we had all of the information that was necessary to make that decision. There's no doubt that there were some gaps in the information on the actual terms and conditions as to when council approved the purchase of this property. As of today, you know, as I indicated, we did not meet this month. However, I have been in contact with, as Mike Russ over here, just wondering where we are with the communications and discussions with the Legislative Assembly and trying to figure out where we stand in all of the work that they're going to do on the grounds policy on that particular topic. But nonetheless, I know that's not the question you're asking, the question of whether or not there's any validity to the resolution that we passed. So again, I will commit to taking that back and further exploring whether or not there's any recourse here that can be looked at or adjusted based on that and the terms and conditions that we accepted as a council through that. So that's all I can give for you this evening. Thank you.
Second question? Okay.
And my follow-up question is, when you look at that particular property, where we're paying $4.8 million, did the City of Charlottetown do its due diligence with respect to a property appraisal? Was the property appraised? And was it appraised with the covenants that we just found out later when we discussed, when we discovered, thanks to Discover Charlottetown, that we don't have the final say in the property? The province makes that, the province makes that decision. Where we've got stuck with a piece of property that we've got no say on, and in terms of a follow-up to due diligence, was there a property appraisal done on this property? What is the property actually worth? I'd like you to take that back as well.
Yeah. Thank you, Counsel Twill. You know, I believe there was an appraisal done on that. I don't know the actual terms and conditions of what that appraisal was off the top of my head. But nonetheless, I know as a council, we had many discussions on that particular property and its value and value for service, I guess, that we were going to get in relation to what we got back out of that property. Again, you know, I think at the time it was discussed that it was a historic piece of property that would benefit the city for many years to come, et cetera, et cetera. However, the absence of really fully understanding the fine print and the detail that was not brought forward to council to help us probably maybe formulate that decision and what we would do had we known that some of those terms and conditions may have been restrictive in what kind of controls, if you will, that the City of Charlottetown had on that property. So again, I can take that back if that's public information to determine what that, what those values were, and I'd have to, or if I can defer over to Mike Russ, and maybe there's an opportunity to answer that question here this evening. Again, I don't know if it's, what's public information and not, so thank you.
Mr. Russ.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the chair to Counsel Twill. I'm not familiar with all the details on hand at the moment, but we can certainly pull the file back from when those discussions around the original purchase and sale between the city and the Confederation Center, or I can't remember the exact name.
Father's Confederation, Father's Confederation Center Trust.
We can pull the file from the time those discussions were taking place and bring forward further information.
Counsel Twill, last question.
Yeah, thank you. So again, I'll reiterate, my question is, was there a property appraisal done? What was the property, what was it estimated at? What was it valued at? And was that exercise completed with the covenants that we found out at a later date? Was that information present when the property appraiser, when Annan did an appraisal of the property? Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And with all due respect, we were given the information what the property value was at that time before the vote, right? And that's the biggest reason why I didn't vote for it. So we all knew about it, but there was historic value in it, and that's why other people would vote that way. But we all knew the numbers. Thank you.
And it's, Counsel Dron, it is going back to the committee. Yeah. Counsel Matar, do you want to enter?
Yeah, I will, thank you. So just to address Counsel Dron's question, I'm not suggesting we didn't know the number, I just don't know what the number was. It was asked you this evening what the number was, so it doesn't, I don't have that information. I do recall some form of appraisal was done on the property to, obviously as a requirement of council asking, you know, to such a purchase. So I just want to be clear, I'm not trying to not answer that question, I just don't have that information with me here this evening. And if our staff don't have it, then if it's available to us, we should get it and provide it to Counselor Twill or rest of council as being asked. But I guess I want to just look at it from the perspective of, I think, Counsel Twill, you had mentioned that in the way in which the, like, the property assessment, you know, would have that had an impact on the terms and conditions that we could do on there? I don't think those go hand in hand in that way. I don't know, I don't see how, like, I think it would have been a decision, if we had known more information and more detail about what we could and couldn't, we may not have made the purchase as a result of that, right? I don't know if it changes that, but that's just my own opinion. Again, yeah, we're in a difficult situation with this piece of property in the sense of, you know, not fully understanding what we can and can't do on it. We hope to get to that conclusion sooner than later and work with our stakeholders on that. But yeah, it doesn't change the fact that, you know, as your concerns are being raised here, and I raised the same concerns in our meeting of this committee back a number of weeks ago, and I still have those same concerns as to, you know, what we purchased for value and what we can and can't do now. So I share your concerns in that. Thank you.
Counsel McLeary. And Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Anyway, as Chair of Finance, on the resolution that Counsel Twill is referring to, I just want to give context here. This was about the City of Charlottetown, in my opinion, council deciding if they wanted to support a $70 million, be a funding partner in a $70 million project, that the Confederation Center was able to advance. So in regards to some of Counsel Twill's concerns, I believe there was an appraisal done through the process. I think it was $3.5 million, I think was the, perhaps maybe the appraised value. Don't quote me in that, but that's a number I've... the appraised value, don't quote me in that, but that's a number I believe that was part of that process. No? No. Counselor Dron is saying, no, anyway, that could be firm, but again, I come back to, I come back to, this was about the city being a funding partner in this project. It's a $70 million project, you had $30 million from the feds, 20 from the province, Confederation Center raising 16 themselves, and then the ask to the city was for $5 million. How could we make that work? I'm the first to recognize that's a lot of money. There's a lot of demands on our capital budgets for the various projects, but to not be part of this, and this was a way to make this happen, we took over the park, it's an asset, it's something that doesn't depreciate, so, and how we made it happen was the, you know, the contribution of, you know, a million, there was 200 earlier, a million at the time and the other 3.8 over the next 10 years, so. And as it relates to ownership and this business with the province, and that's being kind of worked out, to me, that's a public spot. You got the War Memorial, you got Province House, it's limited space. Yeah, we're going to have to agree with the, or the province, I guess, you know, is going to have to bless or whatever. I'd like to think that that's going to get, you know, get worked out and satisfy both parties. Thank you.
Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Not to reiterate a lot what Counselor McLeary just said, but when we discussed this, we did discuss about it being a major project, and there was, you read the numbers, 30 million from the feds, 20 from the province, we were looking to make a contribution, and for the city financially, that was the best way to do it, was purchase the land. There was, you know, in the background information, there was talk on the covenants on the property. I guess at the end of the day, Boulder Park is a historic property, and we knew that, we talked about it.
Dates back to 1768.
Yeah, so when we were purchasing it, we knew that it was a historic property. I guess the question I have is, what uses does the city plan on using it for other than what we use it for now? Because my understanding always was that this is a historic park, it has a number of monuments, and it will continue to be used the same as it always has been used. So I don't see, I don't see us buying a piece of land here and, you know, what you see in the media, and so if we bought a piece of land, we can't use it. Well, it'll be continued to be used for what it's always been used, and we were under that understanding when we purchased it. So to me, at the end of the day, we've got a pretty nice piece of property, and it's a memorial property as long as with a historic property, and plus we contributed to a major, renovation to Confederation Center and a major project for the city of Charlestown. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Julie McCabe. Yep?
Thank you. Protective and Emergency Services Committee met on the 19th of August. You will see the minutes from that committee as well as the reports in the package. We don't have any resolutions to bring forward tonight, so if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Our chief of police is here with me this evening.
Chief is here. Our chief. Next report is Counselor Kevin Ramsey. Parks, Recreation, Leisure.
Thank you, Your Worship. Parks Recreation met Thursday, September 4th. The minutes, draft minutes are in your package. There are three resolutions for council's, for council's, sorry, for council's consideration. The Senior Engagement Committee met on June 5th and July 3rd, the draft minutes are also there. The Youth Engagement Committee met June 19th and July 17th, and the draft minutes are also in your report. And I'd like to just put a note, Your Worship, this past Saturday, Borders and Hoops opened up their basketball on Spring Lane Court. There was, I'm going to just sort of guess, but probably close to 150, 200 people there. The place is packed all day. It's a beautiful thing, and I'd like to thank you, Your Worship, for being there, and then Counselor Justin Mertert, who's the counselor for that ward, for being there, and there's the province there, and Josh Witty and everybody for basketball, P E I. Anyone was there, they're raving about it. It was packed, as I said, all day, they had basketball teams from eight years old right up to some U P E I basketball players also being there. So it's a great addition, so I'd like to, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Ramsey, and I was, also just wanted to extend a thank you as well to Borders and Buckets, Basketball, P E I, and certainly all the stakeholders that were involved in making this idea become a reality. Further to that, I'd like to thank the staff who put on and to ensure that this happened, and it was an excellent event, as you mentioned on Saturday, Counselor Ramsey, but more importantly, I'd like to thank the council for supporting this project in Ward 2. And I really, you know, after being there on Saturday, I couldn't help but think how great this would be across a lot of the wards that we have in Charlestown, so not just in Joe, sorry, J. Frank McCauley Park. I think it's, you know, a great opportunity to partner with Buckets and Borders for other parks across the city, and I just wanted to express my thanks for that, and I hope that I'm able to have an opportunity to support that in your areas as well across the city in the future. So thank you, thank you, Counselor Ramsey.
Oh, he's back. I did a good job.
Counselor Twill. Yep. Thank you for your report, Counselor Ramsey. Congratulations on the basketball court, great reviews in our city, a lot of enthusiasm. I have a lot of enthusiasm about the multi-purpose sports artificial field turf to be constructed in 2025 Simmons Field. Resolution was passed April the 8th. I'm looking for a status report, I'm in contact with some of the user groups, including the football community, and they're looking for a status report as to when that project will commence. Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Twill. Yes, and I received some emails from the user groups also, and I passed them on to our manager and assistant manager, Christopher Drummond. We got back to those groups, and if you have any more to add on that, Christopher, with the multi-purpose field, please do.
Through Your Worship, to, through our chair, to Counselor Twill. So right now, we are working on the R F P for the engineering services. Once that is awarded, then we'll work with that engineering company to prepare the tender documents for construction, and then the process will go from there. I don't have an exact timeline on when those will begin, but we are hoping to have that R F P in the very near future to start that process.
Okay. Got a couple of resolutions there. C A O, Brad McConnell.
Thank you, Your Worship. Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Activities Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey and seconded by Counselor Bob Dron. Let it be resolved that the city of Charlestown supports the installation of a sign on the memorial field announcer's booth, recognizing the memorial field as the home of the Charlestown Islanders Senior Men's Baseball Team and their significant achievement of winning the 2025 Baseball Canada Men's Championship.
Question's called. All those in favor? Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Parks and Recreation and Leisure Activities Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey and seconded by Counselor Bob Dron. Let it be resolved the council approves Confederation Landing as the location to install the Holy Dormoir Commemorative Monument, and that the Ukrainian-Canadian Congress P E I branch will be covering all the associated costs with the purchasing and installation of the monument, and further that the Parks and Recreation staff will coordinate with the Ukrainian-Canadian Congress P E I branch to ensure the smooth installation of the monument at the proposed site.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, and I mean, clearly this was declared a genocide, I'm not disputing that, but I'm just wondering, we had a similar, not a similar, but we had an application through our Heritage Board a few weeks back, and they were looking to put a statue, a monument, and it was in a historic area, so it had to go through Heritage. So I'm just wondering, was this fed it through Heritage since it is Confederation Landing Park, or do we have actually a policy, a monument installation policy, and did it go through any of those processes?
Counsel Ramsey.
That's a great question. It was just brought up when we just met last week. Christopher, do you have any questions or answers in that? I don't think it went through Heritage. To our knowledge, it was brought up by the manager, who was not here this evening, so what can we do with that now?
Through the mayor, to, through our chair, to the deputy mayor. No, it did not go through the Heritage Committee. There's nothing, I don't know what else, if we...
Confederation Landing is zoned parkland, is it not?
Confederation Landing is a city park space, correct.
It's zoned parkland?
I believe so.
Counsel Bernard, did you have something? And then I'll come right back to you.
Yeah, that's the second time. I mean, if there's questions like this, we get our package, like on Friday, if there's questions like this, why can't we ask the manager that before it comes here? Because now we get here and it's like, okay, what do you do? Does this got to be deferred? And we've had other packages deferred, and that's why I think we've been asked, if we have some of these questions, it doesn't hurt to call the manager and get an answer. So, anyway, I guess you're going to have to defer until we find out.
Thank you. And with all due respect, Counsel Bernard, yes, it was in the package, and not every single thing can be thought about while we're reading our package, and, you know, I apologize to council if I'm bringing something up that I didn't think of before, but come on, folks, I mean, that happens all the time. So yeah, I'm asking for a deferral. Like I said, this clearly a genocide, this is not about the monument, this is about following the process. And like I say, if I'm taking up staff time and council time by deferring something, I apologize, I'll do much better in the future reading my package.
No, deputy, the Holomador represents a starvation that was imposed by Stalin prior to World War II, and I think it was up to 30 million people died. It was a horrific moment in history. Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. I don't think anyone in here disagrees with why or what, I think what Deputy Mayor is saying is, we get ourselves in situations because we don't follow what the proper processes are, so a great question to ask, we didn't have a clear answer, so let's get the answer to make sure we're following the process, and I'll second her for a referral.
Okay, deferral? Moved, okay. Okay, any questions on the deferral? No? Okay. They call the question? Questions called. Questions called. How many in favor of the deferral? Please raise your hand. Okay, raise your hand.
Is the deferral going to change that?
Well, it'll just, it'll...
Is the deferral changing?
Okay. I just wanted to ask again, who's for the deferral? Raise your hand. Okay, against? Counselor McLeary, yea or nay?
Nay.
Nay of the deferral, so it's four or four. I'll go with the deferral. Let's just check it out. It's going to hold it up for, what, a month, less?
Weeks. And Your Worship, if I may?
Can you just stand up?
Yep, yep. This is not about the monument, this is about, this is about that if, obviously, this is an important monument, but maybe, maybe we have a policy in place or something that doesn't permit it in this actual location, so I'm sure that we're going to find an absolute perfect spot for this, so please don't let anyone misinterpret what I'm saying, I'm just wanting to make sure. We wanted to put a mad monument somewhere, and we weren't allowed because it was on Heritage Parkland, so that's the only reason I brought it up.
Okay. Okay, next resolution.
Parks and Recreation and Leisure Activities Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey and seconded by Counselor Bob Dron. Let it be resolved the council instructs staff to take no further action within the city of Charlestown to formally recognize Mr. Billy McGuigan, head coach of the Summerside Western Capitals for his coaching achievements over the past 20 years, plus years, but do congratulate him on his successful career to date and into the future, and further that the mayor and chair of the Parks and Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee draft a letter to send to the city of Summerside encouraging them to formally recognize Mr. McGuigan for his significant achievements in coaching.
Questions called? Okay, all those in favor? All those against? Eight to zero. Is that it, Counsel Ramsey? Just one second, go ahead.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Your Worship, now that we passed for the Charlestown Islanders baseball team, and then it has to go to planning, and I hope the deputy mayor can get it approved for us, but we're going to put a sign on the announcer's booth facing in when you're driving the driveway, and this is what it's going to be, but it's going to be larger than this, trust me. So that's what we're going to do, but we couldn't do it until it came to council and council approved it. So our next step is on the planning, and then from there on, the sign will be unveiled.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Water and wastewater. Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and just want to state that the Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on August 27th, 2025, and the draft minutes of our meeting are in your package. I have one resolution for your consideration, respectfully submitted by myself, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Counsel Twill. Thank you for your report, Chair Dron. I have a question, and probably I'll go through you to the manager if you can't answer, but as a result of the strike, when work needs to be done, for example, if there's a break in one of the water mains or one of the water infrastructures, like the one we had down in Dorchester Street, my question is, you know, it was a couple of weeks, and I'm not being critical, but it was a couple of weeks, it's supposed to be business as usual, my question is, is this the norm, or were the contractors tied up, that we couldn't get a contractor there a couple of weeks ago? With water restrictions taking place now, we're asking our residents to be cognizant of that fact when it comes to water restrictions, where are we at in the overall scheme of things?
Thank you, Counselor Twill, for your question. I don't have the answer, I'll refer to our manager in operational issues like that. You know, I'm not sure what, who we hire, what goes on, but I'll certainly let our manager discuss that for you. Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you for the question. So through the chair to Counselor Twill, so the standard process for the utility would be to assess each break or each situation, and then prioritize that amongst the workload and what staff we do have existing, so even with a full complement, there could be situations where work may be delayed by a week or a couple of days, depending on the situation, if parts had to be ordered or if staff were busy with something that had a higher priority, so it would be assessed and then prioritized.
Counsel Twill, follow up. Okay, I think I understand it. I want to change my focus now to the cruise ship industry, again, with water restrictions being conveyed to the residents of Charlestown. My question is, in terms of water, that the cruise ship industry is using, is the port authority, are we charging them a flat rate or they metered? And is water restrictions taken into consideration through the chair? Counsel Dron.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Twill. I've known, you know, I've been on the committee as you were, and we've asked this question numerous times. The cruise ship industry, a lot of the cruise ship produce their own water, they don't dock in and get our water, but if they do happen to need water, we sell it to them at a substantial rate, you know, for whatever they take. But usually, they get it out to sea, they have a metamorphosis-type machine that can take saltwater, turn it into a... But usually, they get it out to sea. They have a metamorphosis-type machine that can take saltwater, turn it into fresh water. With, I don't know what the technical terms are, but our manager can do that. So when they do need some water, we do sell it to them, some. But, you know, every ship is a base by basis, you know. I'm not sure if, you know, they have to call if they don't have the water, but, you know, maybe our manager can answer it in a better... You know, if that doesn't answer your question, he can try to clarify. Thank you.
Mr. McInnes? Cruise ship water?
Thank you again. So through the chair to Counselor Twill. As Chair Duran had mentioned, the substantial amount, if not all the water, that the cruise ships take on is through their own osmosis process or desalination. So the water that they would receive from us would be very limited. I can't discuss the particulars of any particular account, whereas that is private to each individual. But if they were to receive water, it would be charged through the Port Authority at the applicable rates.
Is it a flat rate or metered?
Counsel Twill, I have to get that on record. Just, what was the question? Flat rate?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to know, is it a flat rate or is it metered, just like everyone else in the city?
Counsel Duran?
I'll refer this to the manager again, because I have no idea. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Again, through the chair to Counselor Twill. It would be metered, just whereas it needs to be calculated.
Okay, got a resolution there? CAO?
Your Worship, Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Bob Duran and seconded by Counselor John McLeir. Let it be resolved that counsel, as per the conditions of the public request for quotes, accepts the low submission from Environmental Dynamics International, Inc., EDI, for the purchase of fine bubble aeration materials in the amount of $62,313.74 plus all applicable taxes. And that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? Okay, all those in favor? Posed? Eight zero. Is that it? Counsel Duran, anything else? No? Okay, Public Works. Counsel Mitchell Twill?
Thank you. We have some resolutions. That'll be forward to counsel for city council's consideration. And just a summary of departmental assignments. Public Works staff continue to work diligently across all divisions as we enter the fall season. Crews are focused on delivering critical repairs, beautification, maintenance program as the summer season comes to an end. Various capital projects are also underway, including municipal building upgrades. Streets resurfacing Package A and B are complete. Package C tender is out, closing on Wednesday, September 17. New sidewalk construction, fleet management and procurement, engineering designs for master plans and road reconstruction projects. More details can be found in the operational and capital summary sheets attached in your package. So our crews are extremely busy. They're working hard. They're doing a tremendous job. We got a great public works department, like we do all the departments here in the city of Charlottetown. I want to give a shout out to the paint crew, guys that actually paint the crosswalks. You see them out there in the middle of that intense traffic. They do a tremendous job. They're very methodical and very detailed in the work that they do. So just a shout out to our paint crew. I think they do a tremendous job. And I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Quiet, quiet, bro. Do you want to go with the resolution there? CAO?
Yes, Your Worship, Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McLeir. Let it be resolved that, as per conditions of the public request for proposals for design consulting services, Sherwood Sports and Recreation Complex Master Plan, the submission of DSRA architecture in the amount of $83,350 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And that the funds in the amount of $53,850 plus all applicable taxes be allocated from the Public Works capital account for Sherwood Rec Hall updates. And funds in the amount of $29,500 plus all applicable taxes be allocated from the Parks and Recreation capital account for capital repairs be carried out. And further, that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Duran from Ward Six?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And thank you, Counselor Twill, for your report. I know we passed the money for this in the spring budget. Then we went to, out to tender in July, closed in August. Here we are in September. Is there a timeline for this to be completed? Like, I just don't want to see an open-ended where they look at everything, every rock, everything at all. There has to be a timeline where they have to have the report back. Is there any idea when that would be? Thank you.
Counsel Twill?
That's a good question. I think the timeline... Oh, sorry. Mr. Albert, what's the timeline?
Thank you, Counselor Twill, through to Counselor Duran. We would be looking to get the final documents and report back by the end of this fiscal year. So once this is awarded, we will be going and speaking to this firm and just making sure that we have enough time to complete everything that needs to be done. But we will be looking to do this before March 31. That is the deadline, hopefully sooner. But again, depending on how things go with public meetings and work.
Counsel Duran, I know you've been working on this for a long time.
Working on it a long time, and I understand it takes time, you know, for, to get a company to come in and do an evaluation and look at it. But if we're looking at fiscal years, March 31, to have a report done, then it's, we're into next summer. I mean, is it not reasonable to, you know, we have it here, we pass it tonight. Here it is first September, at least four months. And then that would be in time to be right in line with our budgets, to see what we're going to do. If we wait till the fiscal end of the year, then budget time has passed and we won't be looking at this again for another year. This is a, you know, with all due respect, it's been a long, drawn-out affair. I've approached you, Parks Recreation Chair, now Public Works Chair, the mayor, you know, various CAOs. You know, and I'm asking, you know, we have to, or I'm asking, we don't have to, you can tell me, go sit down and be quiet. But I'm asking to, let's get this done before the end of December, so we will be in time for our budget preparations, if that's possible. Thank you.
Counsel Twill, did you want to answer that?
I know our manager set out the timelines and timeframes. But what I wanted to bring to council's attention, this is a very comprehensive, very comprehensive consultation process. And the process consists of four options. Cities requesting at the minimum four design options. Each option is to highlight one of the unique following conditions. Item one, option one, removal of the Sherwood Recreation Hall and the development of a new community center using the previous recreational hall property at 54 Maple Avenue, and all infrastructure remains in place. Option two, removal of the Sherwood Recreation Hall, Cody Banks Arena, and the development of 54 Maple Avenue for a new combined arena, community center space, and the Sherwood Lawn Bowling Club remains in place. Option three, removal or upgrades of the Sherwood Recreational Hall, Cody Banks Arena, Sherwood Lawn Bowling Club, and development of 54 Maple Avenue to provide the same services with consideration given to the recreational amenities relevant to the area. Pickleball courts, splash pads, turf fields. Option four, removal or upgrades of the Sherwood Recreational Hall, Cody Banks Arena, Sherwood Lawn Bowling Club, and the development of 54 Maple Avenue to provide a community center, lawn bowling facilities, with consideration to either recreational amenities relevant to the area. Pickleball courts, splash pads, turf fields, et cetera. So it's a very comprehensive exercise that the city's embarking upon in collaboration, not only Parks and Recreation, but Public Works. And as was discussed at the Public Works meeting, we're looking at the entire footprint of the property to see what the possibilities and options may be. It's no secret where I stand, Counsel Duran. I like to see the same facility that we have on North River Road, built Maple Avenue. That's just my own thoughts. We have the same facility there with a nice community component. Second floor with a walking track and possibly a swim and pool. So those are some of the ideas that we'll generate. And we're going out into the community to ask the community their thoughts and what they think. But the idea is to go out and, you know, with the grassroots, talk to the residents and then bring that information back to city council. So I think it's a good exercise, to be honest with you. It's a good exercise. I don't think we should be looking at, now with this strategy that's before council in terms of a resolution, looking at some of the amenities out there in isolation. We should be looking at the entire footprint to see what the possibilities may or may not be. But this is a great exercise. It's very, again, it's very methodical and it gives the residents an opportunity. I know how important Cody Banks Arena is. I know the sentimental value that it is to the community and not just the Sherwood Hall, but just try to envision what we did on North River Road and having that same facility with those same amenities. And even taking the standard to a higher level. As Pittsburgh Steelers would say, the standard is the standard. And I want to take that to another level on Maple Avenue.
Counsel Duran?
Ah, yeah. You know? I applaud your vision, you know, but I'm a realist, right?
Oh, it's real.
So, well, I mean, you know, I guess if someday you come to me and say, look what I did, I'll be the first one to take you out to lunch. But, you know, those are big expenditures. You know, we're looking at the Eastling Center. You know, there's big expenditures everywhere. You know, who am I to say no? But in reality, a warming center, a nice community center for the community, you know, the Cody Banks can probably last, you know, I don't know, 10 years. I could be mistaken. But, you know, I just don't, I don't have the same vision as large as you. And maybe that's wrong for me to say. So I'll sit down and hopefully staff and you and the council can work and to get something suitable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Question called? All in favor? Okay, next one, sir?
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McLeir. Let it be resolved that, as per conditions of the public tender for Pontle Parkade Concrete Restoration, the submission of Atlantic Underground Services Limited in the amount of $1,959,580 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? Okay, all in favor? Next one, sir?
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McLeir. Let it be resolved that, as per the conditions of the public tender for the 2025 sidewalks Package B, the submission of virtual construction in the amount of $1,269,658 plus all applicable taxes be accepted. And that the budget transfers from the Public Works capital accounts for the new traffic lights in the amount of $1 million plus all applicable taxes and the street exhibition drive, the street exhibition drive reconstruction in the amount of $470,000 plus all applicable taxes to the account for the new construction be carried out. And that further, that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel McKay?
Thank you. I'm glad to see us putting a little bit more money in when we cut so much of budget time when we had our five-year plan, trying to keep them. Well, this got us pretty much back on track with our five-year plan that we had in place, so, okay. That's good to know. Thank you. That's all I want.
Counsel Twill?
Oh, that's okay.
You know what? I forgot. You know what? My apologies. It should have went through the chair. Mr. Chair, can you answer that? Huh? Is that a standard? Is that a standard? Go ahead.
Yeah, we could watch Standard here at City Hall.
Counsel Duran, did you have your hot button on? Can you just put it on again? No? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I've just had a question about this. So the money we're taking from the new lights, and I'll just look at the resolution here. It says, "The new traffic lights and exhibition drive reconstruction." So we're budgeting, we budgeted that money, so we're taking it out of that to do this package. Is that something that we're going to come back next year and look at for the new traffic lights and then put the 470 back in exhibition drive? I know we've been talking about exhibition drive for a number of years and the businesses down there want that. So I'm just kind of concerned that we were taking it out of that budget. Where does that come from for next year?
Counsel Twill?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. And we discussed that at great length. Counsel Matard of the area raised that concern, and he was very adamant and very concerned about the transfer of the money. It's a major project. The work needs to be done on exhibition drive. I think there was a figure thrown around, correct me if I'm wrong, manager, but you're looking at about an $8 million expenditure. Seven, eight million dollars when that project is finally completed in exhibition drive. So I believe there was assurance given to the council for Ward Two that we're going to do our due diligence to get that back on the docket. But the transfers, the budget transfers are required to move ahead with the projects that need to be done.
Just, Counsel Twill, just, was it the traffic lights you were speaking about? I think that's what he was referring to.
Right.
But I thought when they put those traffic lights in, Counsel Twill, you were on council, that was put in by the province.
Pardon me?
They were put in by the province.
What, in exhibition drive?
Yeah. Doug Curry was the minister at the time.
No, no, you're thinking, no, 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 no.
Which one?
No, you're thinking, that's Kenson Road in Woodward. That was lobbied by the council of Ward Two at the time, Danny Redman. Danny Redman, that expenditure was paid by the city of Charlottetown, because that's owned by the city of Charlotte. Kenson Road in Woodward, no, no, it's a different...
So Counsel Duran, is your question answered or I'm just trying to...
Yeah, what I said was the new traffic lights budget, the million dollars coming out of that. That's what I was referring to. So we're not getting new traffic lights?
Thank you, Counsel Twill, through to Counsel Duran. So, yes, there's two separate budget items that we're transferring funds for to do these sidewalks. The first one is a million dollars from new traffic lights. The reason for that is because we saw that it being later in the year. Even if we were to order those lights, by the time they came in, they would just sit in an yard and not be able to be installed until next summer. And we had ordered those lights in anticipation of other major capital projects. We wanted them on hand to do some other work. So we are going to defer that. We will come back and ask for more money for that for next year and hopefully go out for tender early in the spring and then have those lights come in. And then for exhibition drive, just we, to kind of touch on Counselor Twill's estimate, we still don't have a full cost estimate for that street. This fiscal year, we had budgeted $750,000. I believe there may have been more previously, but it was cut to that. With that amount of money, we cannot do the whole street. So earlier in the year, pre-budget... So earlier in the year, pre-budget cycle, I think it was, we had thought that we would go to tender, award the project, spend that money this year, and then continue with the rest of it for next year. But again, that would mean that council would have been approving a capital project in its entirety instead of splitting it up into phases. So we are going to wait, finish the design, have a complete cost estimate, budget for that in the next fiscal year, and then go out to tender for that project in the spring of next year.
Okay, Councilor Bernard and then Councilor Tarter.
Actually, no.
Just look it up there.
I'm okay. He answered it.
You're all right? Okay, Councilor Tarter.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I just, I don't want to sit silent on this because I know it was certainly brought up at our committee meeting, and I raised the concerns about the money being reallocated to another project within the Public Works. So I want to thank Councilor Twill for recognizing that I put those comments forward and certainly recognizing, though, that this is a bigger project that will have to come next year, hopefully, and through our capital budget process to, you know, allocate the proper funds needed to complete that project that's been long overdue and needed. So I'll seek your support at capital time to support this project. Thank you.
That's a standard. Okay. Question?
Question called.
All in favor? Okay, eight zero. Any more there, sir? That's it? Or is there another one? Good? That's it?
Can.
One question?
Just one quick.
Yes, well, it's under this report.
Council.
Public Works, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Councilor Twill, I'm just wondering, we haven't spent all the asphalt money for paving. I'm just wondering why we haven't put out a third package. We've got a couple of packages.
It's coming.
It's coming?
It's coming.
Okay, is there a reason? How come it's so late? September now. Plans closed in October. Is there a reason it was left so late?
No. Plans go beyond October. Go ahead, Councilor Twill.
Well, the staff's been working on a number of projects. They are doing the due diligence. They're looking at a number of streets. I think the tender's going to close on the 17th. Seventeenth, so once that closes, then we're going to bring it to council as special meeting of council. I share your concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Twill. Okay, environment sustainability, who's presenting that? Councilor, okay, Councilor Twill, two reports tonight, okay?
Thank you. Chair Trevor McKinnon couldn't be with us here tonight.
No.
So he asked if I would give the report, and of course I agreed to. I want to, there's Jessica, she's going to grab a seat here, a hot seat, hot stove leak. Want to thank Jessica for preparing the notes. Charlestown saw 125,000 transit riders in August. Ridership is up 1.3% compared to the same time in 2024. New transit services were launched in East Royalty on August 25th. Increased services from three to 11 buses each weekday. Transit staff and operators are monitoring the rollout and gathering feedback from the residents. After a successful pilot in the spring, Charlestown schools are invited to participate in the full launch of the Bike-Bus Program. Bike-Bus Program is a group of bike riders that travel to and from school led by train staff and parents, similar to a yellow bus, yellow school bus. The Bike-Bus travels along a fixed route, collecting students along the way. Students should reach out to their principal if they'd like to be involved in a program of this nature. Rooted in Art Self-Guided Tour will be launching later this month on September the 20th. Rooted in Art is an annual celebration of Charlestown's urban forest, where local artists are invited to create art and city trees on September the 27th, and there's an event at the Arts Guild to hear directly from the artists and learn about their work. More information, charlestown.ca roots. Trees for Life recently granted over 21,000 to the city of Charlestown to plant 500 trees and over 100 shrubs in Victoria Park and the J. Frank McCauley Park. We like to thank them for their generous contribution. I'll do my best, and of course, we have Jessica here, our manager, to answer any questions that council wishes to make an inquiry about.
You got a resolution there, councillor? Yep. Head, sir.
Your Worship, Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Councilor Deputy Mayor Lanny Yankoff. Let it be resolved that council award the Charlestown Fall Tree Order to Ash Streets and Park Trees to Dutch Master Nurseries Limited in the amount of $29,895 plus taxes, and that the mayor and CEO hereby authorize to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question called.
Question's called? All in favor? Eight zero. Thank you for the report there, Councilor Twill. We have finance and audit. Councilor John McElair.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Here's your report, 253 states, so don't have a report for you this evening. Manager slash director, Lane Pino, reached out to me a week or so or thereabouts to ask for deferral just with, and to be more prepared and to have the next finance meeting on September 17th with a report for our second council meeting of the month. So that's all I have to say in that. Thank you. I'll take any questions if I can answer them, and if not, I don't see manager here, I'll do my best to reach back to you.
Councilor Twill.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilor McElair. As you know, a couple of months ago, I brought up the fact about the memorandum of understanding for the $100,000 allotment to the University of Prince Edward Island with regards to funding the lights. Can you give me a timeframe, timeline, when we expect that memorandum of understanding to be forward to council for a resolution?
See the manager right there? Look at that. Come right in there, Councilor McElair. Go ahead.
All right. Yes, no, you are correct. Councilor Twill did have some communication back from Bruce Donaldson on that. I don't know if you caught the Councilor Twill's question, the, he's asking, circling back to the memorandum of understanding with UPI and the lights. And, but, the, I think I'll just need a little more time on that. I'll be circling back to Bruce Donaldson on that for an update on that, but I, and perhaps at our next meeting, second meeting of the month, can give you an update on that. And, yeah, Lane, I think we're good.
Always got another question? Got another question, Councilor Twill?
No, thank you. Just a follow-up too, will the Parks and Recreation senior staff be involved in that memorandum of understanding to ensure that, you know, our user groups have fair and equal access to their venues, considering that we made that substantial contribution?
Yeah, I certainly would expect that to be the case. Councilor Twill, if there be communication between those two departments on that, then see, Councilor Ambrose is shaking his head, and I'm sure he can also be, he can also be maybe part of following that up with Bruce on the request, you know, memorandum of understanding. So not forgotten, Councilor Twill, for sure.
There again, committee's working outside of the silos.
What's that?
Committee's working, standing committee's working outside the silos. Okay, we got some notice of motions.
May I? Just take us time to extend the meeting?
Oh, we're at 8 o'clock. I'm not surprised. We need to extend it. Moved by the deputy, seconded by Councilor Bernard. All in favor?
Yeah.
Councilor Dron? Okay. Do you want to read the first notice of motion? What's the clarification there? There will be discussion to say if we're going to accept it. CAO, do you want to provide some background?
Certainly, Your Worship. We have two notice of motions. I'll read each one of them individually, but council, as per section 41.2 of our new procedural bylaw, will debate and vote on whether or not to advance the notice of motion to the relevant standing committees. So notice of motion, the first note of motion put forward by Councilor Mitchell Twill, that the city of Charlestown begin the process of planning the construction of a multipurpose active transportation pathway on the west side of Mount Edward Road from the bypass to Belvedere Avenue.
Councilor Dron and then Councilor McCabe.
Thank you, and I appreciate Councilor Twill's notice of motion. It's a very busy street. I drive up there a lot. I'm just wondering, before we look at a pathway, would there ever be a, an idea, or could anybody look at if there's a possibility of going with four lanes instead of, to get the traffic moving? I know in construction there, the lanes are backed up. I'm just wondering, you know, there's a sidewalk on the east side, and I'm just wondering, right now, there's not a whole lot of houses or development there. Could the road be expanded to get four lanes out to the bypass? Is there a possibility of looking at something like that?
Okay, that question goes to Councilor Twill. It's your notice.
Well, I think that, you know, I guess you could look at all options when you're doing a plan for Mount Edward Road. As you know, Mount Edward Road is an extremely busy road, heavy commercial traffic, heavy industrial traffic, service vehicles up and down Mount Edward Road. You know, with all the developments taking place on the west side, as you come off the bypass and further up, I mean, look, the apartment complex, there's a number of apartment buildings there, and then as you're coming down further, down past Towers Road, proceeding south on Mount Edward Road, there's more development taking place, and it's just not safe for the residents because they can't commute up and down that busy street. We have students that are trying to get across Mount Edward Road to go to Sherwood Elementary School, and they can't because there's no, there's no crosswalks, there's no where for them to commute up to the nearest crosswalk, and God knows where that is. So we're approving all this development. I said it before, I'm going to say it again. With all this development, you got to have infrastructure, and you, they go hand in hand because we're playing catch-up, and it's the same thing in other parts of the city. So I think we need to look at all the things, and certainly what you mentioned should be looked at as well, but we got to, you know, it's a great thing to make it vehicle-friendly, but we also got to make it pedestrian-friendly as well. Thank you.
Councilor Bernard. Oh, Councilor McCabe, sorry, and then Bernard.
Yeah, thank you. No, I know. And I think I wouldn't want to have to vote tonight on whether we have to look at this specific street. I know your staff is going to look at that whole five-year master sidewalk plan to kind of bring the criteria up to speed. I mean, there's streets that, like I said, we've been waiting. I've waited, can't wait. Next year's 2026 Norwood Road's been on that. That's why I asked the question. So there's many areas that have zero, any kind of safe walk pathways, active transportation, and I think that, I'm hoping when we come back, I think we should be able to forward to staff anytime we have a street that we want to be considered, but I don't want to vote tonight on whether or not I think Mount Edward Road's more deserving than another area because I won't be able to support that.
Especially.
That's what I read in your, if your notice of motion.
Yeah, and especially Norwood Road. I know what you're talking about. Yeah.
But, you know. Mr. Mayor, this change to the procedural bylaw, with all due respect, I don't know where that came from. I didn't vote for it. I really think that, you know, if you want to file a notice of motion, it advances to the appropriate committee. I mean, to my mind, it's undemocratic. It's undemocratic, and we got to get away from that, get away from putting in these mechanisms that prevent councilors from bringing up issues so that you can represent your ward and advance it to the relevant committee or the appropriate committee, or, I'm sorry, the appropriate department so they can have a look at it. For us to debate the merits of that here tonight is an exercise in superficiality because we don't have all the information. But I just want to advance it in terms of having that discussion so the department can look at it and look at the merits of it.
Yeah, so the process is, the process is, if council agrees to go with it, it'll go on to the standing committee.
Just move it on to the department.
Anyways, Councilor Bernard.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the whole idea of the notice of motion was to prevent resolutions from just appearing on the floor to vote for a certain project without having the background information. To do a notice of motion on a project, like to me, this is a slippery slope. You're going to have all elected officials coming in with a note of motion, the elected sidewalk on my street, or whatever, this street paved. I think the process has always been during budget time, you submit your projects to the different departments, and the departments evaluate them, and they do a review, and they come back and make recommendations to us. So I'm not sure, you know, starting to go to a notice of motion over every project we want to do doesn't really make a lot of sense. So for that, I would vote no because I think it has to go through the proper channels. All of us have the opportunity to set projects to, whether it's Public Works, whether it's Environment, whatever department, we send our project to them during budget time. And you can send it anytime. I say during budget because that's when they're all discussed, but you can send your project anytime.
Councilor Twill.
Yeah. Well, I think there's an urgency. I mean, we've had public planning meetings here, residents have shown up, and they said, "We don't feel safe. It's not safe on our side of Mount Edward Road." So the reason why, the motivation behind the notice of motion is to bring it forward to highlight how, you know, it's unsafe on that side of Mount Edward Road. There's a lot of development taking place there. Drive home and look at it. There's major apartment buildings even before you get to Towers Road on the west side, and then the further down you go, there's more development taking place. So we're having, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of traffic on that road, and it's just not safe for the residents on that side of the road. So all I want to do is advance it to the department so the department can look at and examine the merits of it. That's all I'm asking here tonight.
Well, I would echo Councilor McCabe. I've been up Norwood Road. I've walked it. It's not safe.
Norwood Road, we're talking Mount Edward Road, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, this is, this is the slippery slope that Councilor Bernard's talking. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, what I'm getting at is there's other elected officials that have priorities too, and I mean, we just heard one on Norwood Road. But I, you know, I can name a number of them that I'm concerned about in my area, and that's why I think the process has been, take it to the departments, they evaluate them all, they make their recommendations. Because I don't think doing a notice of motion, it makes it sound like your project is more important than her project or another project.
No, it's not.
Like Exhibition Drive has been talked about here for a few years. So Exhibition Drive is an important project too.
That's right.
Again, that was brought through Public Works, and so they're looking to do a design, they're looking to do that project next year. So I think there's a process to be followed. I don't think this is it, because then all elected officials are going to start putting in for whatever projects they want. And you can do that now. You can just let the managers of each department know.
Councilor McElair.
Yeah, I, you know, at this time, I'm not prepared to support the notice of motion here as it relates to, you know, Mount Edward Road. I, you know, I have confidence in staff. There's big projects, you know, you know, Mount Edward Road, Spencer Drive Extension, you know, the whole, you know, bypass. I think there's got to be a lot of work done, funding, probably some overlap with the province, and there's some, there's some big work that has to be done on, you know, on some of these files as it relates to infrastructure. Mount Edward Road's part of it for sure, as is Spencer Drive, and it just goes on and on, you know, with the number two to, you know, what's going on with the, you know, development in Winslow, this, anyway. It's going to take time and a lot of money.
Thank you. You know, this, this really leads us more into a, probably an educational discussion that we probably need to have around when, when do we file a notice of motion and when do we not? Because all Councilor Twill is asking for is to highlight this, as Counselor Bernard said and Counselor McElair, we all have projects we want to highlight, but is this the way they have to come through as a notice of motion? Or can they just go? Because all he's asking for is to put this as a highlighted, important project that he believes is important to be highlighted as we go through this process, as others will do. But if we turn down his notice of motion, what does he do then? Can he just then follow up? Because we've always been told lately, everything's got to come through this. So that, that just, I wonder if we're getting too far down into the weeds in this notice of motion stuff. of motion stuff and that we're filing them on things that really don't need to be. So, if somebody here from a staff level is able to clarify for Councilor Twill that this will get to the appropriate committee to analyze, but it doesn't, that doesn't mean we have to do it as a notice of motion.
It doesn't mean that the project's going to be approved, it's just going to that standing committee.
That's right.
Anyways, what does he want to do? Who's in favor?
I want an updated master sidewalk plan.
Okay, just, I want to get that in public record. Go ahead.
I've been asking for an updated criteria and updated five-year master sidewalk plan. So, if this meets the criteria for his staff and it's on the list, great, but I would like to have a full five-year master plan updated.
Updated. Council Bernard.
I guess for me, I just want to know what's the difference. I mean, putting a request into the department of what your needs are and putting in a notice of motion. What's the difference?
Public records.
Public records.
On public records.
Yeah. Yay or nay? Council Ramsey.
Yeah, and just listen to that. It's just not as easy. Like, if I want to put a notice of motion in with Parks and Recreation, could I not just put that on my agenda for the next month?
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, if I'm a notice of motion?
Yeah.
So, you know, that's just my way of doing it.
Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think, you know, we're kind of getting into a situation here. Everybody's going around on this, but I just want to make a final comment is, you know, I respect what Councilor Twill is trying to do. He's trying to get awareness to a particular situation in his ward. We all have that same situation, but, you know, I think if we, and it goes back to what Deputy Mayor said, if we kind of go down this pathway, then we're just going to be putting notice of motions, notice of motions, notice of motions. But I understand, like, something has to come in as a notice of motion, but so I think we need to determine if we agree to this tonight, we're setting the standard that that's how you have to do it, or we say, go back and sort out, is this the appropriate way to get attention to a request that you have for your thing? Because again, there's many things, as we were talking here, I was thinking about, oh, I've got this place and this, and I'm thinking, I'll just go home tonight and write a request for a notice of motion for all five of these things that I just thought about to come in for, for next meeting. So, and that's perfect. If that's the way we want to do it, and that's how it's going to get attention and get some traction, I'm all for that. But I don't know if that's efficient or not, or whether or not it's actually going to just fall on deaf ears. So, what happens even if we do agree to this? Is somebody actually going to have to action that by virtue of the fact that we, as a council, approve that a motion go forward, and therefore it has to be? What does it mean if we approve it? I guess that's maybe a question to the CAO. If we approve it, what happens next? It does specify here to begin the process of planning the construction of a multipurpose active transportation. So, is that going to approve then that the Public Works Committee, or I guess in maybe Parks, whatever this falls under, would begin that planning immediately? Is that what we're authorizing?
No.
I think that's what we're authorizing. I've got five of them I'm sending in when we leave this meeting tonight as a thing. That's all I want to bring forward.
Brad McConnell, CAO.
Thank you, Your Worship. If council votes to advance a written copy of the notice of motion along with the background rationale that supports said motion, shall then be provided to the CEO who will shall forward all relevant material to the appropriate standing committee of council for consideration, and the committee shall provide a recommendation on the motion to council at a future meeting of council.
Okay. Okay, where does he want to go?
Can I?
Okay, sorry there, Deputy, go right ahead.
Well, I just was speaking here with Tracy for a minute, who's quite knowledgeable on all this stuff, and she mentioned that, you know, we do have a time and a place for these notices of motion, and correct me if I'm not reiterating it correctly, but she said that it's still not necessary to do a notice of motion. If you want things on appropriate standing committees' agendas, like Councilor Twill should be able to just put that on the agenda for it to be discussed. He shouldn't have to do it. So, maybe I ask, if Councilor Twill is willing, that we pull this notice of motion and he just do it the old-fashioned way and take it to his committee.
But if I want a notice of motion?
You do too.
There's a baseball game on.
Pardon me? Yeah, I know, we're here to conduct city business.
I know.
Okay? So, here's what I find amazing. Over the last two or three years, you go to bring issues up, no, can't bring it up. Can't bring it up. It's not in the report. We were told by two CAOs ago, you got to file a notice of motion. So, you file a notice of motion, and then we hear tonight, no, we changed the formula in the procedural bylaw that council has to vote on whether or not you can advance a notice of motion. Let's just keep going. Every chance we get, we're going to make this council undemocratic, undemocratic. It's not a big deal to forward a notice of motion onto the appropriate department to have a look at it. It's not a big deal. Nobody's committing anything. We're just trying to highlight the fact that this is, this road, one of the busiest roads in the city of Sherlottown, is dangerous. And all this development that's taking place, I've said it before, you can't approve all this development without the necessary infrastructure. How are we going to do this? Residents have told us time in and time again, time in and time again, there's no infrastructure, there's no sidewalks, there's nothing taking place. So, back when, years ago, you used to be able to bring up issues to council, you can't do that. Now, we've got to vote on the notice of motion, no, we're not going to advance that. Anyway, it's time for a whole new democratic process at City Hall.
Okay. Can we vote on it? What does he want to do? Move it forward? Yay or nay? Yay.
Sorry, I think what we haven't addressed here is, you know, I think, obviously, we have a procedure here in our bylaw that talks about bringing a notice of motion. So, maybe the bigger question is, is this request an actual notice of motion, or is it just a request that can go directly to a thing? And there'd be some things that are clearly what would be considered a notice of motion. So, if one, if all you're requesting is, I just want to get it somewhere?
Yeah.
I'm all right with just saying, contact yourself because you're the chair, and put it on your committee. And I may send you a couple tonight as well for your committee to consider.
Yeah, yeah.
But I still think fundamentally, we need to figure out then, as council, when we're trying to put something forward as a notice of motion, what would that be? And what's a good example of what something would be if this is not a good example? Because this appears to be not a good example.
You're done?
Okay, anybody listening?
I am, we're all listening. Yeah.
Or did I, I lost the interest of the crowd again. So, I don't know, if this is what we're considering not a good example of a notice of motion, then what is? And I think that's where we need to differentiate. So, I think by virtue of tonight, we can either just say, you don't need to do that, we could just go.
Move to the committee.
Put it to your committee.
Yeah.
Or we can just say, yes, because we want to get it to your committee, we've all agreed to that, and then figure out the path forward on what really is, constitutes a notice of motion as opposed to going directly to a committee there. So, we, one or the other, we can't be, we can't have, you know, partway here. It's either all or it's nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do we agree to move it to the committee?
No.
Yes, yes. How many more yeses?
No.
Yeah. Yeah. Look, we debated this.
Can we defer these two notices, Your Worship, so we understand?
Well, the next notice, I want to, Michael's here to address that next notice. Okay, who wants to move to committee? One, two, three, four, five. Who doesn't want to move to committee? One, two, okay, move to committee.
Yeah, it really doesn't sound like it makes any difference. I just want to say the notice of motion was put in so that staff could work on the details and put a report in for the next month.
Yeah.
So, that council would have all the information they need to make a proper, informed decision. That's what it was put in for.
Okay.
You just don't slam down a resolution in one night and hope everybody votes for it. So, but something like this is a request. This is a request for a project.
Yeah.
And you can put that towards a committee that's responsible for it.
Good. Okay, let's go to the next notice. This is the one that the CAO will read.
So, passed.
It's moving to the committee.
Yeah.
Doesn't guarantee it, just move it to the committee for discussion.
That's right.
Go ahead, certainly.
I understand that, but I wanted to highlight the importance of it. That's all I was trying to do. That's what we were told to do.
Next notice of motion.
Next notice of motion, Your Worship, put forward by Councilor Mitchell Twill, that council directs staff to prepare a comprehensive report on the Irving Oil Project, brackets, Houston Street, including all costs to date, including capital, operational, architectural, consultant, and staffing, the number of firms and personnel involved, contract terms with Irving Oil Limited, timelines, and the extent of staff resources committed. Further, that a public consultation process be undertaken through meetings and online engagement to ensure residents are fully informed and involved.
Okay, it's on the floor. We have discussed this over the last four years. It'll be updated. Michael, do you want to add anything? Michael Russ.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just regarding this file, I would note that we anticipate the project moving forward through to Heritage Board for consideration later this month, at which point it would proceed to the following council meeting in October.
Council Twill, I appreciate this because we've been working on this for four years, and I thank you for your patience, but it's been, as you know, there were NDAs signed, there was lots of online participation, get it done, get it done, letters to the editor, we've had lots of public consultation through different mediums, but this, I think, is, I think it's a good idea. Anyways, go ahead.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
The questions that I asked in my notice of motion, they're all important questions, they're relevant questions, they're being asked in the community. That motivated me to bring this notice of motion forward because up until this time, I didn't know what department was working on this file. I don't know who the different architectural firms that are involved, personnel that are involved. I mean, you know, we had some that were here initially, and then they dropped off. So, instead of trying to, you know, guess as to what's taking place with respect to this monumental project in our city, residents are asking, so why not send it to the appropriate department, which is Heritage, according to our director of planning, and let's get all that information so council has a report, so we, as elected officials, can become much more informed. Right now, yeah, we might approve something, and we had a process, but that was behind closed doors. We never really did anything in a public forum besides the announcement.
Right.
Right? No, hold it. I got the floor.
I know you do.
Okay, so, let me finish. So, we never really discussed it in a public forum, we passed a resolution, but, you know, since the project was announced publicly, people, people are looking for information. It's our job is to give them the information. So, I think it goes to the Chair of Planning and Heritage Department, as our director pointed out, and let's get all that information, submit a report to council, and we support that information, or submit that information to the electorate of the city. Thank you.
Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Councilor Twill. My comments are certainly not a reflection of what it is you're putting forward, and as your motions, I really truly believe you're trying to follow the process as it was outlined for us. But I'm also now hearing, because what's contradictory is, is Your Worship says, yeah, this is great, we should bring this one forward, almost like, let's hammer this one right through. So, one minute we're saying, the other one doesn't need it, this one needs it. So, I think this goes back to, we need clarity on what is being presented as a notice of motion that is, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what you're saying, you did indicate that this is something you want to get more information on. So, if this is the way to get that more information publicly, then that makes sense, right?
But it's coming forward through Heritage, the Heritage Board, and it's also through Finance.
So, what are you saying? So, this is a moot point then?
No, no, I think it's a good point.
That's my point I'm trying to make. You think it's a good one here, but the other one was not so much a good one because it was just sidewalk, you know, kind of, kind of, construction, the planning. So, it's a matter of principle and process for me. I think we need to figure this out because this is going to happen on a regular basis. I think every time we have a meeting, we're going to have these debates as to which one of these have merit to go through in this process. So, either we just, every time there's a notice of motion, we just vote on it and let it go through, whatever, or we figure out that we don't need to do certain ones because they're more on the operational side. I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Council Twill. No, Council MacLeir. Council McCabe.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to say, we've been asked for input on what we want some more education around. There's a prime example. Put that to your list, CAO Brad McConnell.
Yeah, I don't disagree with some of the requests or information Council Twill is looking for, but I don't know the timing of it, in my opinion, may not be right. I'm feeling and understanding that this is getting close to across the line, and hopefully it's going to be done, or that's going to be officially evidenced before our year end. And if so, I'd rather see staff working on getting that thing where it should be, and then when that completes itself, the information that Council Twill is looking for definitely should be shared, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see them distracted at this time when the thing's still not where it should be.
Okay, good to go ahead. Green light? Yeah, it's green light there, right there, okay. Motion to adjourn?
Oh, just one other point.
Another?
Yeah.
You got another point here?
Yeah, I do.
There's only one, two motions. You got another motion?
Yeah, I got a third point.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. For staying with the whole council meeting, and tomorrow night, they're holding an information session at the Merchant Center, six o'clock start, and the public and councils welcome to attend. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you.